Allegiance, Sarah, do you have a flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so for Rocco, Sue Selsner.
Here.
Thomas O'Brien.
Here.
Matthew Buckley.
Here.
Michelle Kaiser.
Here.
Yucwan Lee.
Here.
Barbara McConney.
Here.
Erin Noack.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, a motion to approve the agenda as presented for the meeting.
Motion.
Second, TJ, all in favor? I. Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. A motion to accept the minutes of December fourteenth meeting, business meeting as presented. Motion, TJ, second?
Second.
Barbara, Michelle, somebody. All in favor? I, opposed. Motion carries, seven zero. Statements and presentations of the board. Sarah, would you like to start?
Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm going to start this evening with principal reports, Mr. Glepchek and Ms. Connolly. Mrs. Connolly is not in, in this evening, so when it is her turn, I will do her part for her. Mr. Glepchek, if you'd like to start with the middle school?
Sure, so I hope that everyone had a safe, healthy, and happy New Year, emphasis on the healthy. NJHS will be having a food drive to benefit the Greenwood Lake Food Pantry, so it's on from now until January twenty-second. Middle schoolers can drop off items in the grade six, third, lobby, or the fourth and fifth grade lobby. And if you don't have a middle schooler, you can feel free to leave items with our security officer, who will place them in one of the boxes. And then also, I know we've had some questions on student council elections. We are moving forward with that. Students who want to run for an executive office will have an opportunity to prepare a speech, which will then be shown during our advisory period in a few weeks. And then we'll then have an election day through Google Forms, which is how we've always done it over the years. So those are our two updates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Glepchek. And then for Mrs. Connolly, she said, as traditional field trips are restricted for this year, elementary teachers have gotten very creative and collaborated to curate a variety of exciting virtual field trips to be taken as a class instead. They've been exploring zoos, aquariums, museums, US landmarks, national parks, international sites, and even they went to outer space. Another virtual adventure that the elementary school students have been participating in is the Lego and the STEM Clubs. Students are enjoying the digital challenges and the camaraderie of being online with friends and other cohorts. The Lego Club is giving a weekly challenge, and they stay online to design together and then share out their creations and their design process. Ms. Polczynski, if you're out there in virtual world, is going to do an attendance update regarding the virtual clubs.
Thank you, Sarah. So as promised, I did want to give the board an update on the participation data. We did begin our virtual clubs prior to going out on holiday break. So we started the week of December fourteenth, so we have some data up until last, the end of last week. As you can see, we have a table here with the club name, so I will begin with just explaining Lego Club and STEAM Kids Club. Those were actually broken up into different sessions. So Lego Club is actually broken up into three sessions, and only session one has met thus far, and STEAM Kids is broken up into grades. So grades two have met and grade three have met. So I just wanted to give a little background on that. So for the Lego Club, the average participation rate was sixty-seven percent students present, and they met a total of three times, and that was only session one that met. And in that session one, there are fourteen students enrolled, in a total of thirty-two for the entire club. For STEAM Kids, they had an eighty-four percent attendance participation rate. Like I said, it's only grades two and grades three that have met so far. It's a total of two minute, two meetings that they have had. And in that grade two and three, it's sixteen students out of a total of twenty-six for the entire club. For Virtual Book Club, we had a seventy-five percent participation rate. They met two times already, and they have a total of ten students enrolled. For Middle School Magazine, we had a forty-two percent participation rate. Again, they met two times, and there's a total of twelve students in that club. For Student Government, they had a twenty percent average participation rate, and they have met a total of three times. And the total number of students enrolled in that club is twenty-five. Intermediate Spanish has met a total of two times at a sixty-four percent participation rate, and there are eleven students enrolled in that set, in that class, in that club, I'm sorry. And the Beyond the Art Classroom had a fifty-seven percent participation rate, with a total of three meetings so far, and again, that's ten students enrolled in that session. So just some things to consider, this is very preliminary data, due to the fact that virtual clubs did begin prior to the holiday break, and not all of the clubs are indicative of three weeks' worth of data due to that holiday break and based on the days of the week that they do meet. So again, this is very preliminary, but at this time, I would like some board input. Would you like some more information before deciding whether to add some additional clubs? Or would you like to perhaps share some opinions now?
Does anybody have anything, any comments, board members?
Hi.
Sorry, can you unmute the screen? I'm sorry, Michelle, it's really hard, I can't, I can only see you. Thank you, go ahead, Michelle.
I wouldn't be opposed to adding additional clubs. It seems that even though it was a short time the virtual club has met, that the attendance seems to be, you know, well-attended. So for me, I would be okay with adding some clubs.
Okay, Yucwan, I'm going to go around to everybody. Yucwan, you're next.
Yeah, I'm with Michelle. We don't have enough data, you know, to make a decision. I mean, my, my thoughts, preliminary thoughts were to maybe keep it as it is and, and research some more, but, you know, I don't see a problem with adding, adding more clubs.
Okay, Matt?
I don't see a problem with adding clubs if teachers want to do it, and we think the kids are there to participate. You know, I would say don't go crazy adding clubs, but, you know, I would add a couple more and see how it goes.
Sue, if you called on somebody, you're muted.
Sorry, Erin, you're next.
Yeah, I agree with the group, but I'm fine with adding some more. Well, if kids are participating, I mean, that's what they're for, so.
Okay. Barbara?
Yeah, same, I'm with the consensus here. Let's get some normalcy back, adding some more clubs, it looks like they're doing it.
Okay, TJ?
I think that it looks good. I mean, you're always going to have more kids enroll, whether it's virtual or in-person. You're going to have more kids saying you're interested in it, but actually shows up, you know, it's normal. I have a lot lower than what we projected. But I still think on all of the being virtual right before the holidays, that was a pretty good participation rate. And these cups, these clubs are for the kids, it's for interacting outside of this, the normal closing sessions, everything, you know, at least you're able to interact with your friends that aren't in their current pods, so even if it is virtually, so I think it's good to add more.
Okay, I'm with Yucwan, I would have liked to have seen a little bit more, but I guess, Sarah, do you have any idea in mind how many to add? I wouldn't add too many.
So that, right, so that would be my next question. On how many more you'd like to add? Do you want to double the amount? We currently have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Would you like to double the amount and go to fourteen? Do you want me to bring all the, offer all the clubs? Do you want me to only increase to ten or twelve clubs? That's, you know, up to you all.
I don't think fourteen, I think that sounds like a little bit much. Maybe ten or eleven, like add three or four more and see how that goes.
Yeah, I agree, I would, I would move to, to maybe, you know, three more, two in the middle school, one in the elementary school. Michelle, we'll go back around, what's your thoughts?
I couldn't unmute myself, that was weird. Yeah, I agree with that, maybe like about twelve clubs in total.
Okay, Yucwan?
Yeah, same here, I agree, I think adding, I think doubling the clubs would be too much. Yeah, so, yeah, add a few more.
Okay, Matt?
I agree, add a couple more, see how it goes. And obviously, if there's more participation, we see more and more, just keep adding them as we go.
Right. Erin?
Yeah, mine agree.
Okay, TJ?
I agree, I just, I would say add another three, maybe four to the middle school, because that's where the majority of club participation is. And then one to two, to the elementary school for now. I just think that for the middle school, it's a very broad range of grades and ages. So in order to do something that can maybe include more of the students, if we could do three or four clubs for the middle school, if it's possible to do between the grade span, that'd be good.
Okay. Sarah, anything?
Yep. Did you say Sarah?
Yeah, I said, is there anything else you need for clubs?
No, I took notes on everybody's thoughts and about how many to add, so I'm looking at adding three to four total clubs. I will try to add at least one to the elementary school and put the rest towards the middle school, because that's where the majority of our kids are participating and things. So I will go back to the original club proposal list and put those on the agenda for February. So let me continue on. So just my monthly COVID-nineteen impact update as well that I wanted to share with you guys by the numbers. We've had a total of twenty-two cases to date in district, seven elementary school students and four middle school students, two middle school teachers and one elementary school teacher, three middle school staff and three elementary school staff, and two members of our transportation department. The county numbers, the county was at a ten-point-three percent positive yesterday. It was a weekend, so it entails a couple of days of data, and the seven-day average positivity rate is at ten-point-one percent. In district, however, our twenty-two cases to date account for three-point-five-seven percent of our population. Our current positivity rate, we have two cases that are active. Neither one affected any in-person school or staff. So we, our current positivity rate is point-three-two percent. So right now, in terms of COVID, my focus and the district's focus and administrator's focus is three-pronged. First prong is testing, we have not been identified as a zone yet, but when, and if, if and when we become identified as a zone, we would need to start testing. There was also a random comment by Governor Cuomo a week ago today about a nine percent regional rate, and there needing to be some testing, but there's been no written guidance on that. So both the county district attorney's office, as well as our legal counsel, has said we do not do anything until there is specific written guidance and expectation sent down from the State Department. The second prong of our focus has to do with vaccinations, and I'll go into a little bit about that in a minute, as well as we continue to handle any cases and contact tracing that come our way. So just to review in terms of testing, if we get identified as a yellow zone, then we have to test twenty percent of our in-person enrollment, staff, students, faculty, everybody, bi-weekly, for as long as we are designated yellow. If the results reveal that the positivity rate is lower than the yellow's current day seven average, then we no longer have to continue testing. If we is higher, then we have to continue testing until we're lower. If we get designated as an orange zone, we have to test twenty percent of our in-person students, faculty, and staff over a one-month period, and that's ten percent bi-weekly. If we get identified as a red zone, it's thirty percent over a one-month period, which is fifteen percent bi-weekly. If the orange or red zone random testing yields nine cases or a three percent positivity rate, then the schools must close. If there is no zone designation, I'm sorry, and no zone designations, is there an automatic closure anymore? Closure is based on the willingness of staff, students, and faculty to test and/or the positivity rate. Orange Osterbosse is working to coordinate testing for districts that want to participate in a coaster with them. They are working on getting the binax spit test cards, which is just taking the saliva of the individual. It's not the nasopharynx, which is way up at the tip of the nose, if you feel like you're tickling your brain, and it's not the one in the nose here, it would be a spit test. So they are working on securing that and organizing that for any districts that get identified in zones. Vaccination, they went from saying it would be months until one B was eligible, and then all of a sudden, at the end of last week, it was kind of a free-for-all and open to everybody as of Monday. The links into sign up for vaccinations were accessed through social media rather than through government channels. So if you happen to be on Facebook in the middle of the night on Friday night, you were able to find, start finding the links and sign up for vaccinations. Our employees, every single employee of the district is entitled to a vaccine as we are phase one B, along with first responders. And many of our staff took advantage of that, and I think a lot of our people went today, actually. I will still be working to create an in-house opportunity for vaccinations if it becomes available, but I did advise our staff today to try and book through the regional sites if they can and if they want it sooner than that. As a part of that process of trying to prepare, and this was before we knew that there were going to be sign-up sites released on social media in the middle of the night, we were told, in the middle of last week, we were told that it was going to be done in an organized fashion, and that they were going to be creating sites and going to the different municipalities and going to districts and police stations, fire stations, and creating a system of vaccination. So in the middle of last week, I sent out a survey for our staff, so that I was prepared with numbers if and when they came to us, saying that we could go ahead and do vaccinations. Fifty-five percent of our staff definitely wanted to sign up for a vaccination. Another almost thirty percent were unsure or undecided. Fourteen percent saying no, thank you. A few of our employees actually had already had the vaccine, because they were eligible under one A, and that was our OT, occupational therapists, our speech therapists, and our nurses. So we had three individuals take, three of the five individuals there, take advantage and go get the vaccine. And then for some other ones, it just did not apply to them for one reason or another. So I expect that over fifty percent of our staff will be vaccinated in the upcoming weeks, and up to about seventy-five percent, which is great. And then in terms of cases and quarantining, just like we've been doing since we opened in September, when a case is identified, we begin contact tracing. We look at student, other students or adults that were in the class with that individual, and then we look at other locations where that individual was and exposures based on individual circumstances. We use schedules to determine this, and there's also a contact tracing sheet outside every single office space door, outside any door, there's a clipboard with a contact tracing sheet, and you sign in when you enter the space, and then you're supposed to sign out when you leave to show how long you were in there and who you visited, and who you worked with when you were in that space. The Department of Health did adopt on December twenty-sixth, I believe, the ten-day quarantine or isolation that begins on your day one of exposure, and on the eleventh day, the individual can return to work with a clearance from the doctor and the Department of Health. We have had several parents question the doctor's note requirement, and I let them know, and as I've let you know in the past, that that is a requirement of our local Department of Health, that is not a state requirement, it is not a district requirement, it's an Orange County Department of Health requirement that they have put into place. So I send any inquiries from parents over to the Department of Health, because I cannot change that requirement. And that's it for me this evening. Are there any questions at all related to COVID or contact tracing, vaccines, testing, or anything else?
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
I have a question for, let's see, for the parents who might now want to opt their children into testing, will remote learning be available for them?
Absolutely. Remote learning is a choice for all families.
Okay, so parents that are, if they choose to have their child in person, they have to have their child tested?
So not necessarily. So potentially, yes, but necessarily, definitely, no. So just one example, so it's that one of them was a twenty percent testing, right? So it's twenty percent testing every two weeks, let's say. So that means in a ten-week period, yes, a hundred percent would need to get tested. And it would kind of be that if you're enrolled and in-person, you kind of submit to testing. However, if during that initial twenty percent test, our regional rate is ten percent, and our in-school rate is only two percent, then I can stop testing and move on, and I don't have to continue testing. So only that first twenty percent was tested, and the other eighty percent never had to get a test. So what I would probably do, if we get designated as a zone, is look to secure twenty percent permission from twenty percent of people to kind of be the first set and say, look, this is just kind of a, you can take your turn now and then not have to worry about got it again for a while, but down the line, it may be required that you take the test. Or revert to remote instruction.
Thank you, and just one other thing for the vaccinations with the staff. Do you need to know who's vaccinated? I mean, is that a, does that get reported to the Department of Health?
So they are doing their own tracking of that. We have asked several times if there is going to be any database of who is getting, and we don't know the answer to that. I will be, there is a state webinar this evening that I will be attending, which is why we had to move the meeting. They may answer it there, I'm not sure. Most of my staff, they had filled out the chart, and they told me they were interested in getting it. I see people, you know, putting on Facebook that they got their vaccine, or they're telling an administrator. So I'm hearing kind of unofficially, people are getting vaccinated. The real question, I think, is going to come when people are exposed, have been vaccinated, are then exposed. So we've asked the question, if someone is vaccinated and they're exposed to virus, are they going to have to still quarantine, or because they're vaccinated, would they be fine to continue work and continue school and continue this, then the other thing? We don't have an answer to that yet either, so I'm also, I sent those two questions up, so hope to answer in the webinar tonight. We'll see if we get an answer to that. But I, most people have been very forthcoming about whether, about whether they signed up for the vaccine.
Can I just ask, because I see that some are not willing to, are not going to take it, and some are unsure. So I don't, you know, if you have any insight, if that's going to be a requirement or anything?
I don't have any insight that that's going to be a requirement from the State Department. I know that there is the possibility that districts can make it a requirement for employment, but that would be, and there are districts that are going to be doing that. I don't, my personal opinion, not district opinion, is that I don't think we're there yet. But I would never make that requirement without discussing with the Board of Education and having a conversation about it and making it a policy or formal, formal decision and discussion with the Board of Education about it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, Sarah, do you have anything else?
Not for my superintendent's report, this time.
Okay, district liaisons, Matt or Yucwan? It's been a quiet month, is there any, anything for high schools? I don't think so, right?
No, nothing for Warwick, nothing.
Yeah, I think just-
Can I just inter, for Warwick, there is going to be testing for them. I think they sent down an email either today or yesterday about the students need, that they need to be tested.
Sarah, do you have any update or information on that? For testing?
There are some districts taking a preemptive role in asking that question. I, because we've not been designated a zone, and you have two weeks after you get to be designated a zone to plan that, that's when I would probably send something out. Like I said, at some point, it may be a requirement in order to be enrolled and in-person, but there's just not enough state guidance out there right now. They actually haven't even been designating zones the last few weeks, so I don't, I don't know where we are, and I have decided at this point not to move forward with asking specific students, and I don't want to start something if not, if it's not going to be anything. If we get to a point where we're identified in a zone, then I will, then I will send something out.
Okay.
Yes, Sarah, I haven't seen an email, I don't think Sue has.
No, I haven't seen anything for Chester and Yucwan. I, I don't think they just, did they discuss it at their board meeting? I don't, I'm not sure.
No, they didn't discuss it. So, so Michelle, they're, they're requiring their students and faculty to vaccinate?
Yeah, I just thought-
They're about to open.
No, not to vaccinate, for, just the COVID testing.
Oh, the testing.
Yeah, just it's COVID testing, not that's, not anything.
Yeah, they didn't discuss that in the meeting, so.
All right, well, to our, our families, let's check with Warwick to see where they're at. Matt, do you want to do our legislative update?
Sure, I'll, I'll keep it, I guess, small, but the state legislators just met the beginning of week of January, and apparently they have two thousand bills on their agenda already. But the biggest thing, obviously, to everybody, is the federal aid, which goes into the state aid. And right now, everybody's waiting to see what the new administration's going to do and where that aid is going to go. That's about it for me. Sue, you have anything?
No, it's, it's been a little quiet, they're, they're revving up, I think. It's coming. All right, Matt, that's great. Um, Oxba did not meet since our last meeting. They meet again next week. Do we have a facilities update, Sarah?
Yep. Yeah, and I'll have Rob chime in here in a minute, but the middle school water system is still not passing the VOC tests. We, the system was specked out to be all in copper and was not installed in copper. So the plumber that we used has been directed at this point to replace all the plastic pieces with copper at their own expense, brick expense. We are going to bypass, for right now, we're going to bypass the water softener, because we have isolated that that is indeed the problem and the source of the VOCs. We are going to bypass that while we figure that out, and then we are going to be draining, cleaning, and refilling our water tank. Rob, do you want to add anything about that? Any, that says- Rob still says connecting to, or Rob's-
I think you summed it up pretty close, pretty well.
I think you summed it up pretty close, pretty well. Um, at this point, we're waiting to hear back from the plumber on when all of this is gonna take place.
And then the other thing on the agenda tonight is the Two Bay Garage that was put up several years ago at the middle school parking lot uh, was not an approved project by SED as is typically, as is required. Uh, so on tonight's agenda item is for the engineer to draw the building, submit the specifications to SED uh, so that it is what's called a found building and then is an official building of our district. Uh, does facilities committee want to, wanted to add anything to?
TJ, Yuquan, do you have anything to add? No? Okay. I think we're, that, that was everything. Um, PTSA, I don't think Tracy's on. She did give me, in case she couldn't get here early. Um, PTSA said, um, past events and happenings. The Gingerbread House contest had two winners, Erin Persico from the middle school and Gianna Sorrentino from the elementary school. Twenty-five dollar Visa gift cards went to each winner. Santa announced the winner live on Facebook. All pictures are in, and if you have not gotten them already, they'll be distributed by the end of the week. They did snack boxes for the teachers and staff at both schools to thank them for all their hard work right before the holiday break. Um, coming up Tuesday, the nineteenth, is a PTSA meeting at seven PM via Zoom. They're having cupcake wars for Valentine's Day. More information coming. Spiritware flyers will be going out in the next week or so. And they're working on other ideas for fundraisers, and if anyone has any ideas, they would appreciate you emailing them or attend the meeting to discuss. And membership is still open and ongoing. That's PTSA. Um, Village of Greenwood Lake, is Kathleen on here? I don't think so. And that's it. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or say? Okay, we'll move on to privilege of the floor. If anyone would like to say anything, uh, it's three minutes. Please give your name and address. Anyone like to share? Okay, let's move on to, uh, seven point one. Going to approve the first reading of the NISBA policy manual, section four thousand. May I have a motion to approve the first reading as presented? Motion for Aaron, second, Barbara. Um, any discussion? All in favor? I? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Eight point one, motion to approve the financial reports for December twenty twenty as presented. Motion? Michelle, second. Barbara? Um, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Eight point two. A motion to approve the retainer agreement for the annual financial audit with Nugent and Hustler as presented. May I have a motion? Michelle, second. Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. A motion to approve the agreement with Felonzer Engineering as presented. This is for the Two Bay Poll Barn. A motion, please? TJ, second. Yuquan? Any discussion or questions for the full board? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Eight point four, a motion to approve the cooperative purchasing agreement with Clarkstown Central School District as presented. A motion, please? Barbara, second. TJ, is there any discussion on this? Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Eight point five, a motion to authorize the twenty twenty-one IRS mileage rate as presented. Motion? Aaron, Barbara the second. Uh, no discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Nine point one, a motion to appoint Vanessa Villamil as permanent daily substitute as presented effective January twelfth through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Motion? Barbara, second. TJ? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Motion to accept the CSC CPSC recommendations as presented at this meeting for December twenty-first and then December fourteenth, December twenty-first, January fourth, January eleventh. Motion, please? Someone? TJ? It's Aaron for the second. Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. A motion to enter into executive session for I gotta remember the reason. Um, why I look for that. Our next meeting is February eighth at seven PM. And, uh, to be determined, it should be Zoom again, and no action will be taken. And our reason for, Mary just sent it to me before and I lost it. One second. Our reason to enter into executive session is for the employment of history of a particular person. May I have the motion to enter into executive session, please? Barbara, second. Yuquan? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank everybody for attending. Uh, no action is taken after our meeting. Thank you, guys.